Good afternoon. I call the order, the February fifteenth, twenty twenty one meeting of the Patent Board of Commissioners and the Financial Finance Committee meeting. I don't think we have any additions to the agenda.
No additions, Mr. Chairman.
No additions to the agenda, okay? We're gonna start out with our tax for leasing and refunds. And we have motion.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman. Second?
Moving on to second, have we approved the tax for leasing and refunds? Any questions? All in favor, have you known by eye?
Aye.
Or opposed, nay? Aye, has it? So, order. Our next item is the Morgan's Corner traffic safety and planning concerns. And the state's in the agenda that create an amendment.
Create backup one.
Yes, a budget amendment. I did that last week.
What about the budget? You don't like that?
It's gonna be easy, it's gonna be really easy today. First of all, in the budget amendment, amendments, the first one, two, first three items have already been approved. I don't need to discuss them today, so it's just one item, and I'll turn it over to Chair for the one item.
Okay, the last one for the finance, we will approve the software on the last finance committee meeting, and this is just a budget amendment to reflect the corrections. My item four, please.
Okay. Any questions? If not, then a motion to accept our budget amendment.
Motion approved.
Moving on to second, have we approved our budget amendment? No questions? All in favor, have you known by eye?
Aye.
Or opposed, nay? Aye, has it? Now we come to the Morgan's Corner traffic safety and planning concerns. Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Perry, myself attended that meeting, it was Sparty. That meeting was held because they, one of the residents of New Land was concerned about the traffic light at Morgan's Corner and Route seventeen. And concerned that was very serious accident there. And that that's been an ongoing problem, that that area. And Sean, you wanna kind of review?
Yeah, I, you know, just like you were saying, the area's kind of been brought up. You've gone through the area, that specific intersection. It was brought up by some residents up there. You know, some of them are pretty well-respected people that that we know and interact with on other levels. We also had the chief of the volunteer fire department up there to talk about some of the extractions that he's had to make. And really kind of talked about the frequency of some of the accidents there. So, coming on the heels of this deadly accident the other week, you know, it was just talked about what could we do to try to get some people to slow down and really pay more attention to that very first, what really is that very first traffic intersection coming down from Virginia. So, we think there are a couple of factors involved just from the discussion, and we wanna open that discussion and that talk up with some of our local DOT staff. Sparty, I don't know if you got anything else. The sheriff was also there, Mr. Perry.
Mr. Perry, did you have anything to add?
The only thing that I have is the fact that I mentioned the other day the director of the traffic, of the safety colleagues and so forth here. I truly think, and I still think that we need to get him involved. I think the director in the past retired, is that correct?
That's what was mentioned at the meeting.
Retired. But I'm telling you, people get into that, you know, all into that.
One second, I think Jerry Jennings retired.
Yes.
And Sterling Banks were retired tonight, there's two of them.
We have two, two left up here tonight.
I didn't realize that. I don't think people, we gonna do very much until we get them involved in what we're talking about.
Well, we have two.
That's my question before.
Well, we have two left here with us tonight. We've got Randy Benji who is the district construction engineer, and David Hox, the district engineer. Would you like to come up to the mic and, or you wanna do it some more first?
Well, you know, I think, let's see, I know you all have a meeting with residents up there.
He can come to the microphone so she can record.
Okay, well, hey, that's no problem.
And while he's coming, Sparty.
Yeah, I could just add something quickly, because, you know, we talked about a lot of accidents in this area, and just, I get text alerts if it, if something happens above a certain level, be it a crash or accident or whatever, so I know there's a lot of accidents there. But we also had Callie Felton run our nine-one-one records, and she went back to twenty fifteen, and in that general area right there, since twenty fifteen, there've been two-hundred-and-eighteen accidents. So, it's, that is a very dangerous area.
Okay.
Well, I guess what I was gonna say is, you know, I know we have fire chiefs and members of the New Land community, and basically we just came tonight to kind of hear what their specific concerns are. You know, we've got the accident data and, you know, some other supporting documentation, try to figure out what's going on up there. But what was their take on what's causing this, other than the fact that they haven't seen a traffic signal in twenty-five miles or so?
The things I remember, one, the traffic light, when the people coming up seventeen at the traffic light, sometimes changing so fast that if you're not really paying attention, that that's because an accident. And the other thing, I mean, they came up with some suggestions as to how we might slow the traffic down some. The one, so that suggestion was a flashing light that would show when the light is changing red. Maybe it wasn't flash, maybe, you know, I've seen the sign where it come up with a message that the light is turning red, or something like that.
Yes, sir.
In a way, and that was a suggestion. The other one was rumble strips, and what am I missing?
Well, Mr. Jordan, I think, you know, it was, it was, you know, generally just kind of characterized as, you know, the accidents seemed to be involving the north, the north and southbound lanes. And it seemed, it seemed like, because of the size of that intersection, that the cycle time might be involved, not having enough time to get across that large intersection, depending on which way you were coming or turning across traffic. You know, and there was a lot of anecdotal, you know, comments there, not, not anything with any real data. And so, you know, we did kind of apologize for just kind of having a brainstorm and me not really coming to you with any data, you know, specifically, but we were really hoping that we would really kind of open this conversation up, and you might be able to tell us what some of the tools that your belt might, might be for looking at this intersection. Like Mr. Jordan said, you know, there were some things that were brought up that were just kind of discussed. We don't know that it would necessarily help, but I mean, if, if like all four directions went to red for a length of time to make sure anything in the, in that intersection had time to clear, you know, is that an option? If somebody start looking at those things? Are there some other alerts that we can kind of put coming up into that intersection to say, hey, look, you know, we know you can see the light, you know, you can see, coming from Virginia, you can see that light from a good ways away, probably far enough away that you can say, I'm not even gonna slow down for that red light, you know, I'll probably make it through the intersection, but by the time it changes. Right now, I don't know what's going through, you know, the driver's hands at the time, but we do think that there's enough evidence to look into a little bit more. We did have a miscommunication with some of those residents up there. I think they maybe plan on coming to the six o'clock meeting.
Yes.
Rather than the four o'clock.
We had the same question.
Okay, all right. So, we will hopefully shed some light on more of the specifics, but it was really just something that, hey, we think there's an issue here, there's a lot of traffic, we can foresee a lot more traffic going through there. And so, what can we do as a county to make sure that if there was an I-87, you know, that we have the setbacks and there's nothing that kind of makes it so that we can get that type of overpass through there? And then what can we do to work with you? Because that's probably the long-term solution to what we're talking about here, is that that whole intersection changing and into something different. But the short term, in between, because God only knows when that's gonna happen, right? What can we do? What can we do?
Okay. Well, just to kind of give you a little background on that intersection, I know you said there were two hundred and some odd nine-one-one calls, at least as far as our accident analysis system, we've only got forty-seven accidents currently at that intersection over the last five years. So, that started, I believe, at the beginning of twenty sixteen and running through the end of twenty twenty. Out of those forty-seven accidents, thirty of them were rear-end collisions, where people were stopped at the light and other people failed to notice it and ran into the back of them. But it was a bad enough problem in twenty twelve that they implemented some flashing signals that are about a half, well, thirteen-hundred foot back, so about a quarter mile in the intersection, there's a flashing yellow light, says signal ahead. But also, about the same distance back, there's another inductive loop that will detect when the car is coming over top of it. And what that does is, it lets that signal controller in the cabinet know that, hey, this car cannot stop, they're going too fast, they're not aware that this light has turned yellow. So, it'll hold all four corners of the intersection red for additional five seconds to allow that car to clear. But really, our decision on how to change that traffic signal starts about twenty-four-hundred foot back. There's a set of inductive loops that tell you the length of the vehicle, as well as how fast it's going. So, if it's over twenty-two foot in length, it will not allow the light to turn yellow. So, that'll allow the traffic trailers, which take a little bit longer to stop and get on through the signal. Then there's another set at thirteen-hundred feet for cars, for automobiles, and once they pass over that, it will not allow the light to change. So, that's how far back it starts making the decision and the light changing. So, that's kind of what we got going on there, those two different methods. But, you know, like I say, we were hoping to come tonight as well, business concerns and, you know, some of the options that came up during your brainstorm session, and really just take them back to our traffic engineer, as well as our planning department, and see what they can feasibly implement.
I think that's a great first step, is to really just, you know, obviously, you know, there's, there's a lot of infrastructure already in that, in that intersection, right? So, I mean, at some point, it's, it's been problematic. I know we spoke with the sheriff, and, and he's, you know, committed to kind of stepping up some patrols out there and doing some speed monitoring. So, you know, we're looking at hitting this from a bunch of different angles.
I guess the other thing is that whether there, whether there's anything out there now, because one of the things I'm hearing is, we have a lot of things in place, but what's going to help to get the attention of the driver that's in the car, and that's not paying attention? Question, have you got?
And I agree with you, I mean, I think that's it. I mean, I think Grassville Parkway is the last signal, and that's about twenty-four, twenty-five miles, so they've been running seventy miles an hour feasibly for twenty-five miles. And like you said, you can see the signal well in advance, so it's just people not paying attention. As a matter of fact, the only fatality that's occurred there in the last five years is a motorcycle that ran into the back of the tractor trailer, and the highway patrol report estimates he was going seventy-five when that occurred, and the tractor trailer was stopped. It is people just not paying attention, so like you said, what can we do to make them pay attention?
All right. Do we have any other questions? Anything else?
David, what would create an opportunity to put the rumble strips, some other type of traffic control? Like, you and I thought before, I, and you recognize caution lights, but I know there's a stoplight there, too.
Right, yes.
So, I don't even look for it.
Yeah.
Is there anything that would predicate putting something like that as a traffic control device to let people bring it to their attention?
I mean, I think that's definitely an option. I need to take it back to the traffic engineer, because again, rumble strips are primarily used, you know, coming out, I believe it's thirty-two out of Eaton, when you're coming up to, you know you're at the stop.
Yeah, yeah.
So, in this case, you know, I don't know if there's any precedent of running over a set of rumble strips with the light maybe green.
Green, yeah.
But like you said, it will bring your attention to something that's going on, that makes you look up and see what's happening. So, you know, I'd definitely take that back to the traffic engineer and see if there's any other instances throughout the state where rumble strips are used to signal.
And based on what Sean, the fire chief said, a lot of more people turn their light on red, leaving Dollar General area and coming towards town.
And get run into the back.
And that acceleration lane, yeah. Would, is that a big outreach as well, to put an acceleration lane there to merge?
I don't know that it would be, but again, you know, they brought up, you know, that being a future I-87, so at some point for it to be upgraded, you have to do a full-fledged interchange right there. So, that's something else we need to balance, is at what point that'll come along where you'll have an on-ramp and an acceleration lane at that point, so.
Okay, let's just make sure there's no other questions. Doctor Perry, anything else?
I don't have anything, and again, thank you for taking your time.
Well, we appreciate being invited, and you know, more than I have to discuss at any time.
Commissioner Lee, anything else?
You know, the unfortunate part, as you and I talked about before, is not just that intersection.
Right.
People aren't paying attention, it's.
No, I wish I had time to pull the crash down for the next one back, or it's a similar situation going on in Northside Road, Main Street, instead.
Same thing.
Yeah, like I say, once you get a speed limit up above fifty-five in a long straight stretch with those signals speaking, just generally aren't paying attention.
And then from, like I said, from Grassville to Windsor, there's four stoplights.
Right.
Two of them break you down to a forty-five mile per hour zone, in Hartford and Midway.
Right.
But this one, and the one in Windfall, are the only two that maintain fifty-five. You don't get any idea you're gonna stop, like say, unless you know it's there.
We were discussing the same thing, that signal there, I believe, at the other end of a through-up road.
That's right.
You know, but like you said, you've been broken down to fifty-five, you're kind of going through Windfall, and things a little tighter on you, it doesn't make you slow down naturally.
Yeah.
Mr. Perry, you have?
Your name again?
David Hox.
O T P, yeah.
Okay, yes, sir, you were my principal back then, actually. He said, hold on, I wrote something up.
I'm sorry.
You've been on my office. I was never an officer.
You are.
I haven't been away this evening.
Mr. Griffin, do you have anything?
Two years ago, we had concerns at Mount Cornwall Road, back at Mount Cornwall Church, about the curb once you're leaving, fire tower, going up there with some speed and accelerating speed, and we did petition, the DOT, to put a slower, slow the speed limit down there to forty-five. And also on Sundays, they have to get the sheriff out there to do that. However, you know, one of the things that we talk about is, you know, the DOT is missing our opportunity to get the right-of-way, the current right-of-way, as we know, on Morgan's Corner Road, and the future interchange, how it's gonna be developed now. And beans that some of the interchanges or overpasses have been tied into the I-87 project, we can't pull that intersection or interchange out of the eighty-seven project and build the overpass or interchange now before it continues to grow and develop.
Well, it can be pulled out, I mean, the I-87, that, a lot of these projects will be done just one piece at a time. You're not gonna see a full-fledged come in and develop I-87 one end to the other, so.
But under the STIP plan, is that that intersection, just as you said, Sparty has data crashed at a two-hundred-and-fifty, and you only have forty-one, and then, and then, then you have to put it in the other system somewhere else in the part of the state as competitive project. And with not being competitive, the economic data, the statistics, and declared declarations, this project gets pushed all the way back, unless, and then it's a political intersection. However, maybe eighty-seven might help us get that fixed. But, you know, Canada's gonna have that. The other question that somebody asked me the other day, why is it we can't do the, what do they call those, where you pull to the intersection, you take a right, go down a half a mile, and do the loop? Caution?
Oh, just so, like a roundabout, a super street design?
What do they call those things?
A service rate?
No, it's not a service rate. Turn right, go down a half a mile, and then we can go.
Super street. Like what you got in Tar Hill, from Tar Hill Barbecue on to the Bridge.
They also got one down near Washington, and it's a pretty busy intersection in a couple places there. And, you know, that one is eliminates the traffic signals, but you still got the bus crossing over a four lane highway to do that at fifty-five miles an hour.
I mean, there's definitely some opportunities, I mean, you know, I don't, again, if there's bus taking concerns at the intersection, they could start pulling the crash down for this intersection and make score higher. You know, right now, I think some intersections, like, you know, S T I P, for flowers, private this one, again, if even crash down supports us moving this one up, I mean, it can definitely be done.
With the growth, but according to the data on Highway one fifty-eight and the resurfacing and the widening of that road, will that not increase traffic on that road? I know it's got the safety on it, but will it not increase better traffic flow going into Suffolk and also in the backside of the Norfolk Port? That's one of the things that they were talking about, how that north, well, that western flow of traffic come here or eastern, you know.
I agree, I mean, because ultimately, you know, you end up, a lot of traffic going through that one fifty-eight intersection, and a lot of you in the summertime will avoid one sixty-eight, the toll road, they'll use shortcut roads, three forty-three, and go through that one fifty-eight intersection at Morgan's Corner.
And that's the data that we can't record, because of annual or year-round data, it's only a seasonal five-month data.
Right.
And that's why these, these roads here in Eastern Monmouth don't score well, is because we have an annual statistical number. I mean, it's still political on that board up there, how they're appointed and how the points are distributed, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, you have anything else?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, in addition to the traffic safety concern, we've got the planning concerns as well, so I'll get Shelley Cox to come up and address those. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you, David, thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, in discussing the existing traffic issues at this intersection, we wanted to discuss the potential for future traffic issues, because that is an area of the county that is definitely gonna be growing in the near future. We are getting a lot of inquiries from the Morgan's Corner area, for new development, particularly, and I've included a couple maps in your packages today, just to want to show you your I-87 in the immediate future, we're gonna see some commercial development. And that is, on the western side of Highway seventeen along one fifty-eight, drive to the side of Dunk through, I have been in contact with a design firm that is looking to install a commercial sales, retail sales facility, sort of like the Dollar General, but on the opposite side of the street, the side of Dunk through. I've also been in contact, not, fairly recently, with across seventeen on Northside Road, that side of the intersection, there has been some interest in someone putting a fast-food restaurant at that location. I haven't spoken with anybody recently, but I did have a concerned property owner nearby that called me the other day and asked me, hey, why are there survey flags out here? So, that homeowner had heard that there was gonna be a fast-food restaurant going in, she's seeing survey work done out there. I don't have any applications in my office for it, but there, that certainly is a potential that we need to be aware of and be thinking about, or discussing, the existing problems at that intersection, and the potential for future problems at the intersection. I've included a zoning map of that, that intersection, just to show you where the commercial, existing commercial zone is. And what that means is, anybody that looks at any of this property that's in red, which is commercial, they can basically develop a lot of uses by rights that will generate a lot of traffic. You know, general retail, fast-foods, sales, food sales in general, are all permitted by rights. So, if they come in my office tomorrow with an application for a site plan, as long as it checks all my boxes as far as what's in the zoning laws required, we have to approve it. And I think that we need to think about that, because when we're talking about future I-87, what do we need to be doing now to preserve that intersection and to preserve that corridor so that it isn't developed and it doesn't make it harder for us to get those improvements down the road? I mean, we're obviously kind of low on the priority list for getting those improvements and bringing that up to interstate standards, but we don't wanna make it any harder than it already is. So, it's a lot easier to plan for this right now, when it's not really developed, than, you know, ten years from now, fifteen years now, when that, it's a lot more expensive, and they've gotta buy out some fast-food places and then retail stores. And then you also have the issue of traffic, because you don't want, I mean, when you already have an intersection where there's a lot of traffic concerns, you're adding in more traffic the more that area gets developed. So, we need to start thinking about this and planning for this, you know, and then our immediate concern is this particular intersection, but we also need to think about that entire corridor. We have three main nodes of where potential development can occur along this corridor right now. One is the Simpson Beach Road area, one is the Hollisville Boulevard area, and then there's, there's this one. So, these are the ones that we really need to be thinking about and planning for. There's a couple of things that we could do, you know, temporarily, as a stop-gap measure, you might want to consider adopting increased setbacks. We did increase, adopt increased setbacks for solar projects, if you remember last year, but that's just for solar projects, that's not for any other type of commercial or residential project. So, you might want to give out some additional setbacks from the corridor. We could consider a highway corridor overlay district, which we don't currently have now in the county, but that is something that a lot of communities do, is they adopt a highway corridor overlay district to protect their highway corridors. That could include the building setbacks, as I said, driveway locations, separation requirements for driveways. You don't want those driveways stacking up right at the intersection, you want spaces out and make them further apart. Also, you may want to consider sign standards, billboard standards, you know, we kind of are a little bit limited as far as what the state statutes now allow, but that may be, I mean, if you're concerned about aesthetics at all, now's the time to put those standards in place, instead of letting everything develop and then coming back and trying to change things. Also, you might want to consider a minimum lot size for that area, encouraging that those noodle types of developments, instead of strip developments. And also, consider aesthetic standards as far as facade, with exterior buildings, with parking, with increased landscaping requirements, underground utilities, that sort of thing. That is, the board wants to go in that direction. But what I'm saying tonight is, if you're gonna go in that direction, now's the time to do it, instead of coming back in twenty years or thirty years after everything starts to develop.
Shelley, you. So, there's two things. One is, DOT to the MAP program doesn't have any money to lock in the property so they can buy, but that's, that's the big issue.
As far as I'm aware.
And the county can't go dictate or say what's there, because that infringes upon landowner rights. So, we're caught on the edge there.
Somewhat. I mean, we do have some authority to adopt zoning regulations that would establish standards to help preserve the corridor, and that's something that we would need to work with the DOT to find out, okay, tell us what your needs are, what's the right-of-way you're gonna need here? You know, what, what do you need for us to preserve, and we can preserve that through the zoning process?
So, back to our DOT representatives, how are other areas doing this now, Randy or David, with their preserving corridors? Or can the, or can the county do that?
I'm not aware of any other instances in the division where counties are doing protection of corridors for future projects. In, in certain instances, the department has done advanced acquisition of right-of-way ahead of projects. The most closest one to here would be Mid Currituck Bridge. We've actually done it twice for different land-in-sites on the Currituck Outer Banks. That would probably be something that we would need to go through Gretchen to see if she knows of any other areas that's more in her wheelhouse than, than me on the construction side, but, and, and the same way, Shelley, with, with what our anticipated needs would be from a design perspective for right-of-way, I'd recommend coordinating through Gretchen Byram, who's our project development engineer, and my cohort.
But if we could follow up on that same conversation, is that when they did the projected I-87 corridor and Highway seventeen overlay maps, they had already drawn it, and that map is really not good anymore at all. That was, that's, I mean, when you talk to Mark Finlayson about where they are in some of the other areas, there's still right-of-ways through, into the MAP program, the state purchased properties program, they're still being bought, however, projects are still moving forward. And, but we also, Shelley, if you remember, when, like when you started with the county, I think, we had that meeting about what we call Highway seventeen bypass, and we had some planning meetings, and talked about exactly the design standards. And so, you're, what you're asking for there is to have another meeting similar like we did then, kind of put, lay out the plan together, and then hopefully, you know, get it to the board for their approval, and then that way you'll have some direction, is that what you're asking?
Yes, I think this is something that the special projects meeting committee might be.
That's what we do.
And that's something that the DOT needs to be involved.
Potentially pre-denominational development. So, if we're gonna base human error, which tends to be what's promoting all these accidents, we're gonna make major changes to the opportunities that we have in that area, then we need to make sure our data is a lot more accurate than what it is that we're creating, and we're just creating an issue that's not the issue, in other words. Now, unfortunately, there's an uptick in accidents everywhere, because of social media and everything else. That's just a new added thing, that's why Virginia just changed their law, it's not gonna work, you can't hold your phone while you're talking, that's just gonna make it worse. Now people are gonna not hold your phone while they're talking. So, they're gonna see an uptick in, you know, kind of like, anyway, if you go down that, that really gonna be the weeds. We just need to be careful when we're talking about limiting landowners' ability to utilize good commercial property, when our major basis is because we're having. When our major basis is because we're having an uptick in vehicle wrecks. If that's our basis for doing it, then we need to look at the data to make sure it's correct. Before that's a pretty big decision to change that on. So I like, Mr. Mead would have that same concern. It's easy to say that's a problem and we need to be careful with it. And I appreciate Shelley's concern, but I'm not playing devil's advocate at all. I just want to make sure that we have good, sound judgment. Heck, if I owned the property there, my potential would be trying to get folks to come in. We talked about it, put the new parcel rec up there. There's nothing better than to have a bow dangle on that corner like it is in every other corner going across the state. But if you start limiting your abilities to develop those properties based on what I'm hearing as traffic concerns, is that truly, you know what I'm saying? You just want to make sure that's in concrete before we start setting parameters on ourselves to be able to develop those areas, you know, into something that will really shine in that part of the county. That would be my concern.
If I could just add, if you don't mind, you know, it is a safety concern, but it's also, what I'm talking about is trying to preserve that ID. 7 corridor.
Right.
We want to make it as economic as possible when the DOT is ready for this part to become a future ID. 7. And this is a goal of the county is for that to be a future ID. 7. And the more expensive it is, the harder it is for us to get that to happen. So from an economic development standpoint, you know, you have to balance, okay, what is the, you know, the small benefit versus the large benefit? And if it's more beneficial to our community to have that as a future ID. 7, we have to think about that.
Right. And we definitely need to keep that in our thought process. Trying to think of good, but I didn't buy a wedding ring when I was 10 for my wife that I would meet when I was 29. Doesn't make sense. You can't, depending on what politics in Raleigh does, ID. 7 may or may not ever happen. So you don't want to break land too much and then you just let that land decide and it never gets utilized. Make sure you tell my wife I used her in the good house. I love as well, you know, I came up with just like that and I was pretty pissed.
Mr. Griffin wants to follow up.
So Barry, back on the special projects, what has happened several times on these future planning needs? It's not so much of something that's set in stone. It's how you start putting it and you start laying your groundwork for the future. Whether you get $16 million or $20 million to build the interchange at Morgan's Corner from outside of the ID. 7 project, that's a project which I've been asking for since I've sat on this board from the very beginning. And that's the project that Pasputank County needs to put at the top of the priority list. Not an interchange, not an interchange or another connector road from Rio Church or something like that. That's our priority. We need to make sure that through the STIP plan, that's our priority. Figure out how to get the thing to score using the DOT data, using Shelley's data, put the economic data to that. That's how that gets developed.
Take care of what we already have when we start ahead.
Right. But that, there, you don't have to tie that, and I think it's Randy and David are saying, that is not tied to the ID. 7. We could pull it out.
That's right.
It's already done. And that's one of the things that I've asked DOT during our RPO meetings is to have these discussions with the state about buying bikes of the interstate instead of buying the whole interstate at one time. And when we had Representative Torbit here two years ago, that was one of the things that he suggested. Don't let the $350 million elephant stop your one $12 or $15 million project. Let the project stand on its own and fight for your project politically and fight for through the STIP plan. Which still is going to be down the road because now we're funding in 20, 2026, I think is the next cycle, if I'm not mistaken, four years, four to five years down the road before it gets through the system. So even though it's still there, it still, you know, has to be a priority.
Oh yeah, it still has to be like it is now. If you can meet with a prospective client in those areas, that is obviously something that should be on your checklist to go over with it. Hey, you know, just realize there's potential here, which will be great for business because they want it off ramp to come to their business. You know what I'm saying? It's a good way. What we don't want, or what I don't want to create is what our body across the road did with Hollister Connector. I mean, you've got, I have a friend that bought a lot when it first went out there and then he said, hard as overlay district, you can't advertise anything on your front porch. Well, it's hard to sell motorcycles from a piece of property you purchased when you can't put them on display out front. So it's never been built there and it probably never will because they want to look like Williamsburg and we're not Williamsburg. Okay? So we had to be careful with that so we don't set ourselves up to we go, oh shoot, this would have been really cool, but investors aren't going to build there now because our rules are so, you know, bar set so high that this is unachievable. And so we don't want, we just want to set ourselves up.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
No.
Find that middle ground.
That's why I suggested let's go to special projects because I do think, you know, I don't want to be the one sitting in my office making these decisions.
That's right.
I think the board has to be getting input, giving me some direction as far as what direction you want to go in because you guys are the ones who are elected and making those decisions and adopting those rules.
And it may be that Dave and Randy could give us some options to help with the traffic deal. They may find out, you know what, it wasn't even, this wasn't as much issue as we thought it was. You know, even with the call in that we've had out there. Like I said, almost all of it, well, most accidents are human error. They're just, you're coming out from Virginia rolling and it just, it happens. I did not know the length of the vehicle at 2,500 feet.
That was new to me. That was supposedly develop our local signal technician and now they're using that statewide and such like that. This is the first one they've been on. But that's what I told him, I need to pick up this a little bit longer so I can get that benefit.
I was going to say, I need to pull a trailer when I'm going back to Virginia so I can get the red light.
You can make it.
That's right. Very interesting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Barry?
I would talk to staff, having a meeting, special projects and having Mr. Otis come to that particular meeting so that the things that he's familiar with, he can share with us. And you know, he can sort of help guide us a little bit, you know, what we can't do. But I do think it's important that we all talk together and get our information spread away, just like you mentioned before, before we run out there.
That makes a decision right quick to affect all of us.
Anything else?
Mr. Griffin, you have anything else? No, I was just asking Shelley to add Mark Finlayson, who is the Highway 17 representative that's part of our group that's been supportive of our projects along Highway 17 in that conversation.
Gordon, anything else?
I don't think I have anything else for Shelley.
Thank you very much, Scott. I think, and I just summarized this, I think the bottom line for the people that are concerned right now is looking for ways that we can make people more alert as they come through their life, that we cut down some of the damage. I think that was their concern there and not certainly not with any other development that might come in the future. Again, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
You come back at six, I might do the, you know, I'm sorry that we didn't have the young man that brought him. He's concerned that he's not, he's going to come back at six, so sorry about that, but we couldn't get both of you together.
Well, now, the person that brought about the concerns, is that Robert, the Bachelor Fire Chief?
John Easton?
Okay. I mean, because if he can feel free to contact me anytime, I'd be more than happy to discuss it with him. And so Barry's got my number, but feel free to give it to me. I'd be more than happy to talk to him about it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Again, thank you very much. All right. We've got to stay in Newland, I see.
Yes.
Quit retired.
This is in regard to the part of grant process. We previously discussed this with the board. We had talked about purchasing the land and then using that as a match to work trying to get part development funds. And John Holly and I have met several times and we discussed what's our best strategy for obtaining funds. It's very competitive now. The funding is very competitive. And the fact that we don't have a site-specific master plan completed for tractable properties would work against us in trying to get development funds. So the best approach is to go after acquisition funds. So essentially what we would do is request a match of half of those acquisition funds. And so once we pull the three acres out, that would be $576,000. So we'd be asking for a match of $288,000. And then after, when we hopefully receive the funding for acquisition, then in a subsequent round, we could go back and ask for funding towards development after we retain the property and bring a consultant on board to do a master plan. And we talked about, you know, a two-phase master plan. The first phase of it being a community park with things like walking trails and picnic shelter and ball fields. And then that second phase potentially being a sports complex. So that's, you know, what, and we've also talked with individuals, we talked with individuals that was previously on the part of the board to really get some input on, you know, how, what's the thought process and who gets the funding. And so that would be the staff recommendation would be to target land acquisition funding in the 2021 cycle. And then also, one thing we're going to need to do is obtain two property approvals because that's a requirement for the grant funding. So that would be the recommendation from staff.
Mr. Chairman, my question, if we set the manner of recognition, that's presented. Scott? Second. Ooh, Robert's second. Unless you have any questions, Robert.
I'm going to make some comments. We've got a good start on the issue that developed 15 years ago with the partial recreation funds, which I happen to have been a member of for a number of years as a commissioner. And it was, you know, we had several meetings with people coming in, they need something from the northern part of the county. So this is, you know, this is a wonderful thing that we're doing. We hope it all works out. It was Commissioner Wesbough that made the final push when he was a commissioner to get people from the northern part of the county to meet with the partial recreation group and so forth. So I hope it all works out because it's going to be great for recreation, great for the people that have expressed a need to live in the northern part of the county. And this, they said, just give us a little walking trail, run a, you know, around something. And so this is a nice, a nice step up from that. That's all.
Mr. Adams? Would we?
Are we, are we in a contract with that now?
We have a contract, we have an option to purchase. So we have an option to purchase that would take us through the end of September and it's all contingent upon getting grant funding.
Have we looked at what cost of land is set for around that area?
Yes. What we did is we got a broker price opinion, we didn't get appraisal, but we got a broker price opinion and that was the point that we were from in negotiating the $12,000 per acre.
I mean, just with what I've seen itself.
Mr. Morgan?
Nothing. Thank you.
Your dad asked the same question, so we're prepared for it.
He was actually after it, I remember.
He brung it.
He did a brung it.
He thought it was a great deal once it all sorted out.
He got a meeting there.
Y'all had a recording of that?
When we meet tomorrow, I've got like a whole backup.
Frank Yackerman. Thank you, sir.
All right. Now, the person, all those in favor, let me know by eye. All opposed, nay. Eyes have it. So we have it. We're going on now. Scott, we're going to Kitty Hawk now, right?
We're going to Kitty Hawk, so we're going to Dare County now. And this was, of course, a part of the lease file negotiation with Centerra is the county's property at Kitty Hawk was released effective February 1st, 2020, actually 2021. So, but there are two separate parcels. There's 5133 Putter Lane and that's a 0.46 acre open lot. And then there's the primary parcel and that's 5200 North Croatan Highway. And that one's six acres and has a 31,831 square foot building on it. The Putter Lane is an interior parcel classified as commercial highway undeveloped. It has a tax value of $144,000. A similar property sold for $160,000 in November of 2019. 5200 North Croatan Highway has a tax value of approximately 7.2 when we started these initial discussions in 2019. They actually did a reappraisal and that tax value dropped down to $5,164,600. And that, the biggest part, the reason for that was the condition of the building. And so they dropped the value of the building down considerably, raised the property value of itself. In terms of comparisons, there is a clear two-acre parcel that's listed at 4100 North Croatan Highway at $1.8 billion, that's 900 per acre. And in addition, there's a 1.86 acre parcel that was sold in February of 2020 for $1.85 million and that's a little under a million dollars per acre. Very little vacant property in Dare County type market. I talked with the Dare County Assessor's Office. It's a very volatile market because there's limited commercial sales. And based upon that limited research available, I'm recommending the listing price for 5133 Putter Lane at $250,000 and the recommended listing price for 5200 North Croatan Highway at 7.5 million. And that would be 1.25 million. My logic on that is it is higher than the property that's sold, the one comparable property, and it's higher than the one that is up for sale, but in terms of supply, there is no six-acre parcels. So that would be the recommendation. And the recommendation, they're both higher than the tax value, but, you know, in particular, I think the Croatan Highway, 5200 Croatan Highway could bring a premium because there's no parcels of that size available. And what I would recommend is in addition to those listing prices, I would put both of them up for sale by owner and list County Attorney Mike Cox at the point of contact.
Okay. So I think a motion, a motion would be to recommend two prices for selling plus posters as for sale by owner and making Mike Cox a point person. Have a motion? Have a motion, I'm second.
I'm second.
The move is properly seconded. Any questions, any questions? Commissioner Stare, any questions? Mr. Adams? Mr. B?
I think it's a good idea for the county to try to settle. I mean, they're probably going to charge, but 60%, 70%.
Yes, it's an incredible amount. And Mike's already, Mike's always very well experienced in selling Dare County properties. Yes.
Offers of nine point some million, ended up closing for five something. Yeah, that's right. But we did, I had done it before and do it again.
Mr. Overman?
Scott, is that the Putter Lane, is it contiguous with that six acres, six acres?
No, there is, no, it's, if you go into the property, take a left. There is, there's only a long Putter Lane, there's only one vacant piece of property there and that would be it. And Centerra actually owns the other piece of property that's in between Dare and the Croatan.
Okay, so it's just a grass lot?
It's a grass lot. I went by there yesterday and took a look at it, so it is, yeah, it's undeveloped.
And... I mentioned, I didn't get early enough to ask, we got closed session. Is it because of the tenant, ongoing tenant? Derek asked a question, mine, would doing for sale sign now be appropriate? Or we're going to work that out after the tenant situation?
It would be appropriate.
Okay. I didn't know if I had interference for a moment.
I didn't know that had interference for a moment, you're okay.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Griffin? Okay. We have heard the motion, all those in favor, let it be known by I.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Ayes have it. Your order?
Yes.
Nothing else, we're ready to go into closed session. The motion is going to close session.
For thirty-five.
For thirty-five. We're moving progress seconded, we're going to close session, all those in favor, let it be known by I.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it. We'll get a second minute, and we'll set up the closed session.